And the recommendation from the Revenue and Expense Review Committee is to appropriate a $1,400 contribution to that event for this year's fair and festival, which will be taking place, I believe, on Saturday, December 7th during the day. So is there a motion to approve the recommendation coming to us from the Revenue and Expense Review Committee?
Motion by Rob. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Scott. All those in favor. Signify by saying...
A discussion. What I wanted to say that they had asked for $5,000, but we approved $1,400.
Okay.
One of the things about these types of requests, this particular item is a 501(c)(3). They've met all the requirements. And Amy, we do get receipts from them to verify that money was expended.
They're supposed to do a report.
Not supposed to, but we do, correct?
They're supposed to give us that, the report afterwards, yes.
Did they do it for last year?
We didn't. We didn't fund them. The Create Bacchanum did.
Yeah, went through Create Bacchanum.
This is the first year that this event is being held under its own 501(c)(3) organization. The first two years it was housed underneath Create Bacchanum, which is its own 501(c)(3) organization.
And I might note too, again, sort of what Randy had mentioned, in-kind service that the city presents to these types of events.
Yeah, I think the in-kind services, I know it's hard for us to put a dollar amount on those, but I think those are much higher than people really anticipate.
Yep.
And one thing I mentioned, I'm not a member of the Revenue Review Committee, but I was in attendance at that meeting, but I did mention that, you know, when I went to cities with my events, they normally gave me about a three-year plan. They wanted me to be self-sufficient within about three years, and that's whether I was putting 600 heads in beds or 600 rooms, 100 rooms, whatever. So that's something I think we ought to encourage our events to do is try to become as self-sufficient as possible and not totally depend on the city in funding it. I mean, I knew in Morgantown, I had three years enough. If I wasn't on my feet by then, I'm out of luck. And you know, Flatwood, Bracken County, same thing. Across the other states I went to, I never got anything more than a three-year commitment. Now, there's variations to that, obviously, and there's flagship events and so forth, but you know, that's just something to consider.
Well, Randy, you can work out an in-kind scenario if you want to take the time to do it, because most of the times it's our employees are doing things in preparation and then, you know, cleaning up and so forth. And, you know, you take a look at what their hourly rate is and what their pension plan and health insurance and so forth. So you can get at least a semblance of an idea, and I don't think that's inappropriate to take a look at that also. Here's a question. Ethan, Amy, do we have a TNM sheet or program, timing materials for the different categories and activities?
We could probably go back and get that. Do we right now? We can, yeah.
Okay. Well, your employees spend a lot of hours setting up a lot of different things.
Right. They get it in preparation. Activity logs and activity logs, so.
We don't need specifics, but like, you know, we use crew member to put up barricades, you know, have a fee for crew members, and we don't have to reinvent the wheel. You know, crew members are out for five hours. This is what the in-kind is going to be, or this is what it will cost.
Yeah.
Just like we would for a construction company or any business.
Yes, we do that in other departments, and we do an extension for another company or for a private individual who holds sheets like that for security.
Can you often tie, bring in extras, extra police or in-kind for security?
All right, there is a motion and a second on the table. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of appropriating the $1,400 contribution this year for the Dickens Christmas Fair and Festival, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Likes unopposed. Motion carries.
And Amy, we need them to submit a report after it's done and optimize what the expenses are.
Okay.
All right. Holiday schedule.
Sorry.
Sorry, I was going to get to it too.
Yeah, pretty simple. Twenty twenty-five holidays are listed there. According to state code, that's what we use. Might just mention that December 25th is on a Thursday. We do not normally, unless they specifically say municipalities are subject to this. If they designate that as a holiday through the state, that doesn't mean that we get it, and I wanted to make that clear to them.
You mean the Friday.
That's right, that Friday.
Right. They'll get the 25th.
That's, they'll get the 25th, but not the 26th, because generally the governor will declare that, and there's a lot of confusion about that. We don't get it unless they specifically would say municipalities.
And that all may change, because...
It'll change, yeah.
Pat Paul's going up to DC, so Morrissey may not do that.
Well, it may get federal. Pat Paul gets federal.
Pat Paul may make it along the land, who knows? Baby dog will put its paw on it.
Baby dog will have his own day. But we could make it to 26th and 27th.
We give our employees vacations, and I don't mean to be spruce here, but we give our employees vacation days, and they can take them and schedule them. We try to work around them, particularly in holidays.
Well, Amy, well, I know you're a screw.
I'm just...
I will also...
I'm looking out for the city.
I will also note that when we post, we will post this. Once it's approved tonight, it will be posted on our website. Around the end of the year, we'll post it on our social media, and I would encourage everyone to pay attention to it, because just because it's a holiday doesn't mean that there is no trash pickup. We only do not collect garbage on the major holidays, but Columbus Day, West Virginia Day, President's Day, Martin Luther King Day, we are collecting garbage those days. But Christmas Day, obviously, we're not. Thanksgiving Day, we're not. New Year's Day, we're not. Independence Day, we're not. But we post those for clarification on our website and on social media, just so everybody knows that we try not to interrupt the trash week as much as we can. So just because you see these holidays doesn't mean we're not picking up garbage all these days. So, okay. You see the list in front of you? Is there a motion to approve the 2025 holiday schedule?
So moved.
Motion by Randy, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Jack. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Likes unopposed. Motion carries. Amy, you mentioned the approval or the bills earlier. Is there a motion to approve our bills that she read to us?
So moved.
Motion by David, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Rob. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Likes unopposed. Motion carries. All right, Ethan, it's your turn. Department of Public Works.
You're tired already, aren't you?
I have to work out tonight. All right, so for the department as a whole, I've been working with a firm regarding some of the enterprise boards regarding some issues with FEMA and EPA with those standards not being up to date. So waiting on some more information from them, but it's coming down the line. I've been working on some of the GIS for the street department and cemetery. We've got a lot of information, just trying to get it all together now. And we discussed the cameras. The street department is almost finished with 30th Street. They have one port form, they have one remaining after that for curbing, and it'll be complete. The city park has been completed. We have some surface restoration, nice ball hoops, and pickleball courts are complete and painted. And the Madison Street lot, the center of it, we seed and milled it and hopefully get some solid established for spraying so we can get the geo grid down. And we have been working on installing some of the street signs, historical street signs less of Route 20 primarily at this time. The waste department, we have been contacted by Corehart about some potential reuse of the waste, meaning they were going to use it as a fuel source to power their plant. We're waiting on some information with that, but I thought that was an interesting idea that they were getting with the waste department about. The new garbage trucks, one is supposed to be here next week, the other shortly after. We didn't get a date set on it yet. The sewer department, we're still working on our primary clarifier, waiting on farts. Hopefully, we will have it up in another month or so. Lower Drive, the sewer upgrade is in its final stretch, going up the last leg to Upper Drive. And moving forward on San Terry Sewer Projects on Chestnut Street and Tucker Street. And we're working on repairing a issue with the forced man coming into the plant. Water Department is, I talked to Kelly today, he said as of this afternoon, they have a couple taps left on Island Avenue. Once that's completed, the street department will begin repairing sidewalks on that project. They are then moving to transfer the meat street services and finish up that project and are going to begin on the development on Dixburg by Clean Mobile Homes. And for engineering, the contract B punch list for the ARPA project is supposed to be complete within the next two weeks. The generator grant number two, a site meeting for the Madison Street fence was conducted, and we are waiting on some estimates for fencing options around it. The bid opening for Stocker was held with BNE Construction being low bid of $29,083. DOH Morton Avenue project waiting on a notice to proceed from the Division of Highways to get the design started on that project. And as mentioned on the CMH development on Dixburg, we met with developer and the contractors beginning subgrade work this week or next week. And San Terry is going to try and start that in December with water around the same time.
Okay.
And I believe that's all I have.
Any questions or comments for Ethan? All right, sorry. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ethan.
Our chief, JB Kimble. Good evening.
Good evening. Mr. Randall, welcome to the scene. I look forward to working with you. Hope everybody's doing well in your package. As you can see, there's no update on our call responses. We just switched over. The emergency reporting software we use got bought out by ESO, and we're transitioning, so we don't have all our reports completed. We're working on that. So in December, I'll have a full report. As you saw, there was an arrest and some arson's in our city recently. We were very busy in October. I don't have the specific numbers, but I know we had several fires in the city and a few fires out in the county. Like I said, I'll have a full report on that, and I'd like to thank Tanner Smith, Lieutenant Tanner Smith, for his hard work in these arson investigations. Our, working with the fire marshal, with Tanner getting his certifications has really paid off. They come in more frequently here, because we did a lot of the groundwork before they get here, and it makes it easier on their, their low staff to also the fire marshal's office. So it makes it very, much easier for them to come in if we've already got the pictures, everything ripped off, everything set up for them to start the investigation. So Tanner and a few of the other members have done really well with that. Training facility in your package, you can see some pictures. We did receive the, as Amy spoke, the crane truck in the hall bill was just over $7,000 to get that $100,000 donation from Loudoun County, Virginia. And we've thanked them, and some of their members will be here for our fire conference as they were last year. So we'll probably, for that $100,000 donation of that trailer, we'll probably let them come free this year, so to pay, help try to pay them back. Along with the training facility, we're working on, in those pictures, you can see the three-story facility. We're doing a lot of that work ourselves. Lieutenant Ethan Smith is a machinist. He's doing a lot of the cutting and welding, but we're getting to the point where we can't lift the stuff ourselves. So Cory, who's done some work for the city, he's been out, and Joey's managing this project to get stuff welded in and heavier stuff that we can't manage with just a few people. Also, you know, we've almost completely utilized the total ARPA money the county commission donated. They, two years ago, gave us $60,000 towards the training facility. I think we're down to $1,000 there. There, in the city budget line item, there's money there we're utilizing. And the Bacchanum Volunteer Fire Department has committed a substantial amount of money. They see the value in this facility, so I'm hoping as we go on, we can get the first and second story of the facility done, so we can get moving with that. Attended the Western County State Fire Commission meeting at Flatwood in September. That was before the mayor and Captain Joey Vax and I went to Charleston. There was a lot of discussion on first two fire fees. There's a lot of discussion on the lack of volunteerism, not necessarily in this region, but statewide. The lack of services that can be provided because of that lack of volunteerism at this point in time. So the state's also aware of the high concerns of lack of volunteer firefighters or the lack of availability of them, especially during daytime hours. There's a lot of fire departments that are scratching on calls that, or they're sending one or two possible people to a call where it takes 15 people, so. And the state's well aware of that. Myself, Captain Joey Vaxa, Captain Elmore, Captain Lynn Vaxa, and Captain Glenn Davis completed John Maxwell Leadership Academy. It was a great class. There was roughly 20 of us, different emergency services groups. Actually, Tabitha Perry, county administrator, and Christie Tenny from the Usher County Commission attended the class. Kevin Junkins from Community Care, West Virginia, he's a clinician in the mental wellness field. He attended, and some other people. Great class, great dialogue. We came up with some, we're going to continue the group that we had there. We're going to continue to have Zoom meetings and lunch meetings, so we can continue to facilitate what people are doing, how we can provide better services to our community. And along with that, Connie Davis, which is Captain Glenn Davis' mom, she approached me recently about donating to a cause in the fire department, and she comes from a leadership background. And she actually sat in on one of our Zoom classes and was very impressed with what was happening, and she donated $4,500 to have another class, because we were talking about putting our mid-range succession plan with our lieutenants and up-and-coming leaders in the fire department through a class, so they can get the same, you know, hopefully get the same results that the rest of us got out of the class. So now, that's 20 more people. I've talked to Ethan, Ethan left. I thought him being new into the big leadership role would be a great fit in that class along with, you know, because John Maxwell class is not specific to first responders. It's business and how you treat your people and how you deal with what your community expects. So it goes into the public sector all over the place. So be looking for, we're going to put several firefighters. I would like for Chief Gregory to put one of his police officers through it. I've also reached out to the county commission for another representative from them to go through it, and then representatives from EMS and fire departments from our region. So, so that was really nice of Ms. Davis to donate that money. As I spoke, we're, we continue to work on the mental wellness program. I've been in several Zoom meetings throughout the state where they're trying to provide the same type of service that we're going through for our members and our region and our first responders here. And the trouble I'm seeing is throughout the state, there's a lot of different visions of what mental wellness for first responders should be, and I think some, you know, you have some that are on the same playing field, and some that are just putting something, a check in the box. And that's the worst thing you could do, is to feel like you have something, but your people don't understand it. So we're continuing to work on that. And today, Truck 11 passed its annual inspection, which is great news, because every time that thing gets inspected, it could be a lot of dollars. So we always like when we get that certification on that truck, so. And last month was Fire Prevention Month, and I got firefighter Shane Jenkins here tonight. He is, since firefighter Lieutenant John Brognoy left, Shane has taken over the fire prevention program, so. All that Shane speak. Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Welcome, Shane.
Thank you.
You're a very good Shane.
City unit council. I was actually going to say it feels a little different to be up here without a red shirt on, so. It feels good in a lot of ways, but. So first thing I want to do, because these things are falling all over this place especially, is first of all, congratulations to Scott on your appointment tonight. And I've got a little bit of something for you here. It's still a little Halloween theme, because I'll tell you a funny story while I'm handing it out. Got my days mixed up last week, and I thought that I was coming here on Halloween night rather than this week. So I have these little cute trick-or-treat bags for you all with some sort of fire prevention materials in them.
Thanks.
And turns out, you get a leg trick-or-treat.
All tricks for you, David. No treats.
Our tree was boiled last year. One more thing, just hand out real quick. So what I'm giving you here is just some things that we handed out during Fire Prevention Week. I want to say that I'm very proud of these. Captain Joey Vaxa helped with a lot of the design on these things.
Was that you?
It is.
Oh, okay.
So he did a lot of photography for those, as well as the design on the rack part that I just gave you. So I'll tell you a little bit about that and just a little bit about Fire Prevention Week. So this year, it was October 6th to the 12th. During Fire Prevention Week, the Bacchanum Fire Department engaged with over 1,227 students across 12 elementary schools, daycare facilities, educating them on key safety measures. Our presentations covered vital topics, including how to call 911 and what they might say back to you, noting your address, planning escape routes, and smoke detector maintenance. We also demonstrated the operation of various firefighting tools and gear and gave students hands-on entertaining, hands-on understanding of fire safety. This year, we took a step back to reassess our outreach strategy, focusing on the effectiveness and long-term impact. Traditionally, if you all are familiar, we've given out like the coloring books and activity books and stuff like that, along with the fire helmets, just a couple other kind of random things, like random stickers that weren't really specific to our fire department. And what we kind of came to the conclusion of is that those students were either coloring a picture in it or drawing in it, scribbling in it a little bit, and they were throwing it away. So we weren't really getting the return on that that we, that we should have been, and that's why we kind of started to brainstorm a little bit on what we could do different, and we went really different. We don't know of anybody else who's doing anything like this, so we're really proud of what we were able to accomplish this year. To enhance retention and engagement, we also introduced unique personalized BFD stickers featuring six individual firefighters, Engine 11 and Truck 11. Each one of you in your little trick-or-treat bags there have each one of those stickers, so you have each individual one that we handed out this year. Our plan moving forward, if we continue on this track, is to eventually have a sticker of essentially every one of our members. So we're excited to continue that program in the future. For the first time, we also handed out those rack cards that you have as well, with fire prevention tips and essential fire safety information on them. These materials have helped open the door to longer-lasting awareness among children and adults. We had a lot of hits on our social media posts that we put out there. People either want specific ones, or people that they knew. I think that people have put a few of those stickers in some mischievous places, but it's all in good fun. It's been a really fun and exciting thing for us, so.
Actually, mine is in the window, hugging one of Albert Winling's Aliens down there, so you can come and visit it if you want.
So we also handed those out and kind of opened the door to some conversation, both when we have visitors in the station and when we were taking part in the trick-or, trunk-or-treat event hosted by FRN last Monday night. So it's also kind of opened up the door to be somewhat of a recruitment tool for us, or at least a conversational tool for us to just have a conversation with community members, and it's kind of opened doors that we didn't really necessarily know it was going to. Branding and marketing, we're at the forefront of those design of the items. If you notice, the rack cards specifically have the red and white, just like our trucks, and we have a goal of supporting future recruitment efforts by showcasing our department in a memorable way through that branding. We believe the updated materials will leave a meaningful impact, helping keep our community safer and potentially encouraging new recruits to join our team. We are proud to have the opportunity to represent the city of Bacchanum and Bacchanum Fire Department in a professional yet fun atmosphere, making a lasting impact on the most important part of our community, our youth. And I want to specifically thank you all, council, for the support that you've given us to be able to produce these things, and just thank you for the support that you always provide us. If you have any questions, I would be happy to answer.
Do you have your report in a Word document or a Manit?
I can give you this one, yeah.
Okay. Do you have where you can email it to me?
Yeah, I can do that.
That'd be even better.
Yep, I can.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Real quick, any questions for Mayor Shane?
I just want to know, why is Larry the one driving? I mean, if the truck gets wrecked, it's Larry's fault, so.
On top of what Shane said, we, sorry Shane, we did attend Three Pumpkin Drops. We started, I don't know, 10 years ago, just doing the academy grade school, and of course that has grown. So we were Hodgesville, and we went to Union Elementary this year.
Christian Academy.
Christian Academy for this year, I'm sorry. And we also, the stickers, we had a lot of requests for firefighters going stickers, and so, but I know that...
I'm going to put four or five of those requests in.
So I expect to see my sticker in your back of your truck, so.
JB, I got a question in regard to the governor's alert a day or two ago about stopping people to, you know, brush fires and...
Yes.
...fires in their backyard. How long do you think that will go on for until we get a substantial rain?
Yeah, the rain we got today, I mean, if you dug down two inches, it'll be dry again. One, like tomorrow, it's going to be sunny and breezy, it'll be dry again. You know, a couple things people need to be aware of. The governor has put that on, so it's a complete ban on burning until he releases that. And I would say he will leave that up to the Division of Forests to say when it's good to go. They've had several large brush fires, especially around the Canal Valley and down that area. We have had one here that wasn't very big. Luckily, it was near a green field at the time. It burned about a half acre, and that's about it. But so, they had a 30-acre one in Arison County the other night, so that takes a lot of resources and a lot of people to take care of that situation, so.
Now, you said we all had, we had some arson in October.
Yes.
Are other communities experiencing those kind of things also?
Well, I can't answer that, Dave. I mean, not, not in our local area in that. These arson's were located right here in the city. Other than one was in the Liggett addition area, just outside the corporate limits. And also, I forgot to break, mention, as we get into colder weather, people need to be securing their storage buildings. If you have a vacant house, you need to be checking on it. If you have anything vacant where people could get into to light a fire to stay warm, you probably ought to secure it, because as we get into colder weather, people will be trying to find a place to get warm. And last year, I think we ended up having seven or eight fires that were caused by homeless individuals getting in storage sheds or whatever and lighting a fire to stay warm, and then once it gets out of control, they just leave, so.
What's the consequence if they're caught?
Um, I mean, it'd be like a third-degree arson, which is simply nothing. In today's world, they'd be in and out of jail in no time, probably. Now, if you, if it's a house, something of value, or somebody gets hurt, or a firefighter gets hurt, then you're talking a whole different scenario, so, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Can I just ask briefly, how do the burn buildings work? You say they're two, three stories, and what is the door right here for the burn buildings?
Okay.
It was an item, I'm just curious, it was $19,000.
Oh, the door, okay. So basically, those Connex boxes are, the way that building is designed is like a two-story house, but the third story is when you anticipate commercial areas, okay? So it's designed to be three stories for commercial firefighting. The first two stories is designed like a house. You'll go in, it's built just like a house, and those doors will be doors that you have to breach to get in to go fight fire. Those doors are built heavy, because they, you're burning them, especially the burn rooms. I mean, you're talking, we would have, by the end of the time, the first two stories will have about $80,000 in metal material in doors to put in there, so we can burn and not burn the Connex box up. So basically, it's like an insulation system, a room inside the Connex box, so you can continually burn and not destroy the Connex boxes, so, yeah. I mean, you're looking, we're going to end up having about $150,000, $175,000 in that whole complex. If you was to bid that out, that's over a half a million dollar place, so, yeah, easily. Any more questions?
Thanks, chief.
Thank you.
JB, could you address, have you had any more things with these EV batteries?
So we had a fire at River View, River Place Apartments, a couple weeks ago, that was an EV electric bike.
We had one in a rental unit, two days later burned up $1,000 in carpeting, and she threw the thing up. I mean, it's just amazing.
There were, New York City has 30 fires a day. New York City has 30 fires a day because of electric bikes. They're horrible.
How many people realize how dangerous they are?
I worked for John Bowman for them to design a policy at Westland that they're not allowed to charge those EV bikes in dorms. Because once they start on fire, they're a vicious fire, even though they're a small bike. They're hard to put out, and they get going really quick, so.
Is that with the electric cars or?
The bicycles.
Well, that's, electric cars are a whole different handling. You're talking 40,000 gallons of water, but then, our policy basically says, if they're not near anything, you let them burn. Because once you start putting water on it, it creates a hazmat scene because the battery's ruptured, and you're not going to put them in. So if you can get them away from everything, you know, it's hard for a firefighter not to try to put something out. But if you're out here on the four lane, you don't have a fire hydrant where you're going to get 40,000 gallons of water, so you've got to have that thought process, so. Thank you all.
Thank you. Up next, thank you, Shane.
Thank you.
Up next, City Attorney Tom O'Neill, we're going to merge his report with old business. He's got a few updates to bring us relative to ordinance 469. So good evening, Mr. O'Neill.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate you letting me participate remotely tonight. And congratulations to our new member of council, Councilman Randall. And I look forward to working with you into the future. I just want to update the council on the status of the property exchange with Westland. I spoke with Petesta today. They apologize that that survey was not, is not ready yet. They are working on it. And if we don't have it by the next meeting in two weeks, I fully expect that we will have it by the first meeting in December. And we'll be in a position to conclude this matter at that point. And also, with respect to the McCoy case, the, she, Ms. McCoy, the zoning matter appeal, just by way of update, she filed an appeal with the Intermediate Court of Appeals, which was, we knew this would happen, was immediately dismissed because that court doesn't have jurisdiction over the issues that she's raising. So she was given until today to file an appeal with the State Supreme Court, which, of course, does have jurisdiction. I have not been notified that she has filed as such, but I'll know that within the next day or two, and we'll receive something in the mail. So hopefully, this matter is at its conclusion at this point. If not, we'll continue to assert our rights in upholding the Circuit Court's decision of the zoning ward of appeals at the State Supreme Court. But we'll determine, we'll know in a couple of days if that's going to be necessary. I'd be happy to take any questions from the members if there are any.
Any questions? Okay. All right. Thanks, Mr. O'Neill.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
All right, under new business, we have the approval of our building and wiring permits. You were sent those this afternoon to review. Is there a motion to approve those?
There is.
Is there a second?
A second.
We have an abstention from Mr. Rigger. We have a motion by Pam, a second by Scott. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Like, sign opposed. Motion carries, noting Mr. Rigger's abstention. All right, we are down to appointing a new CBB board member on behalf of the city. I would ask that you consider appointing Jim Valenson, resident from Elm Street. Would you please support him as we appoint him to the CBB? Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Pam, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dave Thomas. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Like, sign opposed. Motion carries. Okay, appointing the Stockard Youth and Community Center Board of Directors. We missed this back in July, so we've been operating without actually approving this, so we need to approve it officially. There are no changes. Everybody's term is concurrent. So we've got Jessica Vincent from Western University Westland College, Don Nester, Pam Martin, Pam Buckle from the city, Randy Sanders from the city, Nancy Show from the Upstate County Commission. We have a representative, Sam Nulty. And then we have, from the Upstate County Board of Education, Representative Willie Parker, and then myself as chair. Would you approve that Stockard Youth and Community Center Board of Directors? Motion by Scott, is there a second?
Second.
Since I'm on that, should I? I just want to say, should I?
Oh, you can if you want to, yeah.
He already did it, but that's why I kept my mouth shut.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Like, sign opposed?
Aye.
You're opposed?
Yep.
Okay. Motion carries. One, opposition, okay.
All right, now we need to accept the bid opening results. The Stockard Youth and Community Center Board of Directors already heard this from Jay, but we had but one bidder, two, and this is installation of a new indoor gym floor surface in the existing gym. The, I'll find it here. The bid is $29,083, and that is the low, the parent low bidder, which was the only bid we received, is from B&amp;E Construction. They are right close to Parkersburg. Is there a motion to approve that bid? So, motion by Mr. Sanders, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Rob Zulliani. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Like, sign opposed. Motion carries. All right, our final item, I will note, for the record of the press, as well as those watching, you may recall, at the last meeting, following the last meeting, we entered into an executive session relative to property matters. So this property matter now comes to the table for full discussion and vote. It is, the council has had a significant conversation about this topic, as you know, over the past several years. But it has come to a point in time where our pursuit in trying to construct a building across the street is quite frankly becoming priced out of sight for our ability to be able to make it useful for the community. We have been working, well, I say we, it's not we. Ambi, and Barb, and Jay have been working very hard with the USDA on trying to secure financing for this project to get a decent interest rate. But it continues to just nickel and dimas and cost us more cash money, as well as time money from our employees working hard on this. We hit a point a couple of weeks ago where we got a request for, you know, additional studies, additional paperwork, going back to the drawing board again with some of our documentation that's been put into place, and it's going to cost us additional money. At that point, we started to have a conversation about, you know, how much further do we take this before it just, we ultimately still hit a dead end, but then we've spent even more money to hit that dead end. I know that there are folks in the community who have been looking forward to having this new space as a gymnasium. But as of right now, it is not feasible financially for us to make this happen. The estimate that we, the most recent estimate, and this is a rough estimate, but the most recent estimate that we have from our engineer and from our architect firm that we have contracted with to form the plans, says that even with a scaled-down, very bare-bones building with just a gym floor and just basketball hoops and no bleachers and no bells and whistles, and the facade essentially being mostly metal right here on Main Street, we would struggle to construct that for $4 million. We had a, we had a community meeting about a year and a half, maybe two years ago now, where we said that our absolute ceiling, the most that we could possibly spend on the Stockard Youth and Community Center additional building over here next to the existing space, would be $4 million. We could not go over $4 million. It's just, it doesn't make sense, it no longer makes sense, to try to construct something that essentially is not going to be usable by the community. And I think, this is me, and maybe others share this as well, I don't know that our fundraising efforts are going to take us much further than where they already have. We have fundraised, as Ambi reported, about $460,000. We know that the, that a somewhat decent-sized announcement was made last week about, you know, steps forward being made with a comprehensive recreation complex along Route 33 West. I think if we try to fundraise for that facility and try to fundraise for the Stockard facility, I don't know how much further we're going to be able to fundraise to be able to realize bleachers and proper restrooms and storage and a facade that we can be proud of here on Main Street. So at this time, given all of that information and following conversations had with the Stockard Youth and Community Center Board, because those conversations have taken place, conversations had with the council, as well as conversation with the Building Commission that was put in place to work on this project as well, I would ask you this evening to officially vote tonight by way of motion second, and vote to not pursue the gymnasium project across the street any longer.
So move.
Second.
There's a motion by Mr. Sanders, there's a second by Mr. Thomas. Is there any further discussion on this matter?
I will say too, as I made that motion, I was, as the mayor knows, I was a strong, strong proponent for this building. And, you know, we really, really tried to make it work with the USDA, with our partners. We have some tremendous partners within the community. But again, just roadblock after roadblock after roadblock, they kept coming in with some hot price tags in order to fulfill the requirements by the USDA, which is a reasonable requirement, you know, I would assume. But at the same time, you've got building material that's soon to go out of sight again because of the disasters across the country. And I can't imagine, Mr. Mayor, what this would come in at as far as a quote, a bid. I wanted so bad to take it to fruition, to get the bids, get contractors. But the more you look at it, is it really fair to the contractors to go out and make them go through those hoops, knowing that we probably would not be able to afford it in the end? So I am cast, I am pleading the vote to discontinue it, but I do it with a heavy heart.
Also, me, I've been an advocate of this for years and years and years, and I'm really sad that we can't go forward on it. I do hope that we do use a piece of property for something educational, but it breaks my heart because I know a lot of people still look forward to this, but we have to be fiscally responsible. And so I guess that's what we have to do now.
That's true. I appreciate your comments, both of you. What was most likely going to happen is, you know, we were going to, we were going to be saddled with the debt of this for about 40 years. There are a lot of uncertainties from the state's perspective about the city's future when it comes to what revenue we can realize. And I think it's, it really is, to Pam's point, it's not fiscally responsible to move forward with tying us up with 40 years of very large payments, not knowing what our financial picture would look like from what we're allowed to do from the state's perspective. In West Virginia, cities can operate, given the authority from the state legislature. The state legislature can give it, and the state legislature can take it away. And we've already seen some nickel-and-diming effects at the state capitol, you know, relative to BNO tax revenue, relative to fees, licensing fees that cities can charge. And that could only be the beginning. We also have a significant responsibility to keep up our infrastructure. We have, we're an old city. Every West Virginia city is old, every city on the East Coast is old. We have aging infrastructure, just like everywhere else. We have water lines that need work, we have streets that need paved, we have sidewalks that need done and added to. We have fire trucks that need purchased, we have staff that need pay raises, and those, quite frankly, are our priorities. And we have citizens that are living on streets with no sidewalks that we, if we can do it, we owe them that. We have citizens living on streets with no streetlights. If we, if we, Shawnee Drive is, it comes to mind, we've started that project, we've only completed phase one. We have phase, we have phase two to complete, which is adding a sidewalk on the side of the street where all the residents live, and adding streetlights in the city limit portion of Shawnee Drive. We've completed the underground part of it, but we've got work to do above ground. And those folks have lived there a long time, and they deserve the improvements we made in those neighborhoods. We're currently working on a street project, a street skate project to improve Ritchie Street. We've got one planned for Pocahontas Street. And these are the kind of projects that our citizens and our business owners want to see, and us as council members, we want to see too, because that's how, that's where the rubber meets the road, that we improve our community. So we've got, we have needs, this was a want, and I understand it was a big want for some folks, but it's not a, it's not a never, it's just not a right now. And we've got a lot, we've got a lot of work done on this. It can sit on the shelf. If things improve and times change and the cost of building materials comes down, we could look at this again. I would also, as we talked in the executive session, and Pam briefly mentioned it, you know, we, through this process, we have found that our grant opportunities for recreation are about that much. There just aren't grants out there for recreation. But if you look at the grant opportunities for science and technology and research relative to youth, your grant opportunities skyrocket. There's a lot more opportunity, especially in Southern Appalachia, to expand science and technology, hands-on learning for kids. That is certainly not out of the question. If we can find a way to add a building across the street that we do not have to come heavily out of pocket for, but still we're able to create a space that allows kids to learn, we're all, we're certainly all open to that. But that's going to take research, that's going to take work with our friends at Region 7. We can't promise anything like that yet, but we are going to do, we're going to do our homework to see what's out there as far as opportunities for science and technology. There are two places in West Virginia where you could, where kids have an opportunity to have a hands-on learning experience outside of school. One is the Clay Center in Charleston, and the other is the Discovery Center in Parkersburg, which is fairly new. Outside of that, there are no facilities. We have an opportunity to do something here that would be the first of our region here for North Central West Virginia to bring families here and also enrich the families that already live here. We've got an opportunity. I don't want this to be all doom and gloom. We've got an opportunity. So let's pivot, let's look, let's take, let's take an opportunity to see what's out there. But as far as a gymnasium being built over there, the answer's no, right now.
I just, and I don't want to say, we need to let the public know that what, how we can handle the money that's already been donated.
So I have already started to speak with a lot of the larger donors, and the larger donors are very interested to see what we can come up with as far as the science and technology side. Ultimately, I agree, if we decide, if that doesn't become a possibility for one reason or another, and we just can't construct anything over there, I agree. I think, I think the money raised needs to go back to the, to those who funded, to those who gave it. But as I said, I've spoken to a lot of the ones who have given, and they're, they're fine right now, they want to see what we can come up with, and they would be more than happy to be a part of a science and technology opportunity over there.
So if that wouldn't go through, would the money be able to be used to do improvements at our current?
at our current Stockard?
Depends on the donors.
Depends on the donors. They're money.
Yeah, we would yield to them as far as they want to do.
I just want the public to know this name.
Yep. Yep. Any other comments? We have a motion on the table and a second. All those in favor of not moving forward with the gymnasium project across the street, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Like, sign opposed. That motion carries unanimously. All right. You're down to council comments and announcements. We'll begin over here with our, with our brand-new councilman. Scott, what do you have for us this evening?
Not much. I have a one and three-year-old, they really, really wanted to be here, but with the recent time change, it wasn't happening. But I thank you all again, very, very eager, I'm very excited to be starting this new endeavor. Thank you.
Welcome aboard, Scott.
You're here.
You're here. Pam?
Well, I want to welcome Scott. I've known him since he was a little boy, and it's nice to see a new, fresh, young face on council, and I think he can pave the way for the future, which we are going to be seeing some of us disappearing in a few years, so that's all I have.
Well, that note.
That note.
I don't think it's, well...
Oh, I love that.
Disappearing.
Jack?
Well, I need to just say, welcome aboard, Scott. And we know you're going to be a tremendous asset in addition to the city, so congratulations. Something I'd like to see on the agenda for us to discuss would be technology for council members, would be afforded laptops or iPads or something, and go digital with our agendas and materials, and try to save a forest or two. I think that's worth a discussion, and actually it'd make it easier, I think, for the directors, the chiefs, just to upload the report and that, and then we can just pull them up here at the table or hold them forever. I think it's probably good time for us to do that, because with these things, we're just, that's a step away from a rock and chisel, you know. So I think we need to come into the 21st or 22nd century.
Okay. Thanks, Jack. I don't disagree. Mr. Thomas?
Well, I guess I'm going to pontificate, right, Ron?
I guess so.
I got a few things to say anyway. First, I want to say how Scott played his role. I remember Scott when he was just a little tiny tyke, and he lived on the corner of Victoria and Elizabeth Street, and had a trampoline in his backyard, and my kids were using it to walk around the forest. I'm concerned about the Stockard, from the standpoint of not just the potential capital expenditure that we just agreed not to put in, but from the whole, really, programs that are there. We've been involved with Stockard now for about 20, 21 years, 22 years, and we took over Stockard when the county commission basically got rid of it, and didn't want anything to do with it. And, you know, it's a, we've had a lot of changes in our society and culture over the last 20 years, and we were interviewing potential individuals to take on Scott's position, and one of the individuals made a very interesting comment during the interview process, that 50% of the students at Academy do not live with either one of their biological parents. That was shocking to me. And we also had some time years ago, well, in the last 12 months, where some counselors from the high school and middle school said that 43% of the students that are in our school system don't live with either one of our biological parents. And if you take a look at the homeless and the substance abuse in our society today, you know, we're on the verge of a crisis from my perspective. And I think we need to take a look at, what do we do to help our young people? I mean, Stockard's an important thing, possibly, but I also think that it's an opportunity for us, not just as a city, the council, but also, where is the county commission in this kind of endeavor for the future? Where is the school system for this kind of endeavor for the future? Where are all the different hospitals and the large companies like Warehouser and all the different organizations in town? I think it's something that we have to have on the top of our agenda for the future, and that's what I am very concerned about. I think that, you know, we basically fund most of the things for Stockard, and I'm not saying we should not do that for the future, for a science center or educational center, but we should not be the only ones that are doing it. We need help across the board. And I don't have any answers, but I think we've had some interesting discussions over the years, and when we took on the Stockard Center, I think we did it because of our hearts. I don't think our brains were behind it sometimes, but I think that's one of the agenda items that we need to look at for the future all the time. How can we improve the educational, the learning environment, the living environment for our young people? And how can we make sure parenting is doing what they should do? I think we have a crisis, but I agree with what we did, and I think that we need to take some explore for the future. I would also suggest, I've been on this council for many years, and at one time we used to meet with the county commission every fifth Thursday, a joint meeting. And I do think we should do something to work with the county commissioners, not four times a year at a joint meeting, but occasionally meet with something that makes sense long-term. Also, I was chairman of the development for a lot of years, and occasionally, we would have meetings with the county commission, the city council, the different CEOs of different organizations, the school board, the college, et cetera, et cetera. And I think that should be done once in a while, to say, what can we do for the future for our community? Not just the city council, not just the county commission, but the school systems, the Westland, all the different scenarios that live within our community. So, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Mr. Zaliani?
Just want to welcome Scott and look forward to working with you. The only thing I have to say or bring up tonight, which I'm sure everyone has talked about, is the storm drain in front of Speedway.
No.
Or you need a line after you drive over it or swerve and hit oncoming traffic.
They just did something, and it's worse.
Yeah, I don't know what.
Locust Street is a state highway, so here's the cheat sheet. If the street in Buchanan has a double yellow line, it is maintained by the West Virginia Department of Highways. So, that will be Shawnee Drive between Route 20 and Robert Osborne's house. That will be Route 20 itself from Skate Land all the way to Pass Lowes. That will be Marion Street, Oak Ridge to McDonald's. That'll be Morton Avenue, and that'll be Main Street from the underpass here to City Hall, crossing North Florida Street and Island Avenue. So those are all maintained by the State Department of Highway. It does not have a double line on it, and it's in within city limits, it belongs to us. So we have put requests and requests and requests in for that. We actually, I had to leave early because I had a meeting back here. Jay, Ethan, and I attended the Regional Department of Highways meeting in Weston last Thursday. Was anything brought up about that over there at that meeting?
Not at that meeting, but we have met them onsite regarding lane widening, they're going to address it during that project.
Which we have, we have that little powwow meeting on the 21st.
Yeah.
Right? So, yeah, we'll bring it up again. I mean, when we were, when Jay and I and Jerry, this was back in like February, March timeframe of this past year, as well as members of the county commission and the Department of Highway folks, when we were out surveying that area and looking at what was going to be torn down and how it was all going to work, they heard it. I mean, they heard it constantly there. So, I mean, they are aware of it, it's just, it's a small little area in a big district, so. Yep. That's it. Mr. Sanders?
Well, I'll follow up soon. I want to, again, welcome Mr. Randall to the city council. I'm sure there'll be some great contributions from you as we go forward. We did get a news release out shortly after you raised your right hand and sent it out, and didn't send a correction though, because we had, the term expired in '26, the first one said '24, it already expired, but you know.
Pam was already mentioning disappearing, so...
Wow, he resurrected you.
That's right, that's why I had to exit, I realized that, so I went and I could make a quick correction. You know, again, I'll follow up, I'm heartbroken over Stockard Youth and Community Center, but that doesn't mean that other doors won't open, and we have some other opportunities. We have a very beautiful piece of property over there, which, you know, I'm committed, as all the members of this council are committed to utilizing it in some way, shape, or form for something productive and something beautiful for Buchanan. Couple of things, coming up at the Event Center this weekend, we're going to be hosting the Hands and Heart fundraiser, which is an opportunity to hear some great, great entertainment, have a great dinner, the tickets are $25 a person. It's, the funds are raised to go towards trips to like Wabala, where a team of physicians from here from the state will go over there and perform somewhere between 75 and 100 operations on underprivileged children. So it's a great, great event. That's going to be going on this Saturday at the Event Center. Look on my Facebook, my personal Facebook, and you can see the information on how to attend that. And of course, as mentioned earlier, we're going to be hosting the premiere of Hank's Christmas II on December 7th at the Event Center. We'll have some popcorn popping, you'll be able to buy a bag of popcorn, maybe a beverage, maybe a holiday, non-alcoholic drink and so forth, it's going to be a fun, fun time out there. So the holidays are upon us, so let's all plan to celebrate. But again, welcome, Scott. Put your work hard.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sanders. One thing we did, we're going to have to do too, and I'm going to go ahead and invite Scott to attend the Water Board meeting next Thursday, but we will need to appoint Scott to the Water Board, so we'll, I'll ask him to join us for the, for the meeting next week, just to kind of see, you know, how that meeting goes and see who's there. But we will, on the next agenda, need to appoint you to your full list of board opportunities.
Tuesday at 7:00.
It's Thursday, Thursday, Thursday at 7:30 in here.
Okay.
So, yeah. But welcome again, Scott, we're very happy to have you as a part of our, of our mid-stuff here. You know, I appreciate, you know, we interviewed some very, very good people. You know, I was very much a supporter of elevating the next highest vote getter, but through this process, we learned a lot about some people that we didn't necessarily know. And so part of that, I want to, I want to just bring this to you this evening, it has no action, but I, but I want you to be thinking about this. We discussed this last night before we left, but, and I had a conversation today, and she is very, very much interested, but I'd like for us to advance a coalition headed up by Dr. Teresa Black, that will work to head-on tackle, find solutions for, not to say it's going to be easy, because there is, there is no easy fix to this, but to help us locally come up with some solutions to help mitigate the homelessness issue that we're seeing, as well as the ongoing drug addiction that we're seeing. As we noted last night, Dr. Black's passion is in that work. And I'd like for us to realize her talent and her knowledge, and to give her the tools and the opportunity here to work with us hand-in-hand, to, and our community as a whole, how can we better address these issues? None of us have the answers, as Mr. Thomas pointed out, but we need to put some heads together to try to see what we can do, because what used to be a big city problem only is now trickled to small communities everywhere. We are not alone. I'll make that very clear, we are not alone. It doesn't matter what state you go to, it doesn't matter what town you drive through, it doesn't even matter how big it is or how small it is, how nice it is, it has homeless issues, it has drug addiction issues. Some of the prettiest little places you'll find have these issues. And we're one of them. We're a pretty little place, but we have, we have those issues. So I'd like, I'd like to place that on the agenda for next time, for council to consider appointing a coalition to begin working with all of the groups that are in our community already, to try to, let's, let's put our heads together to, what can we do to work on this problem? And it will, it will involve us here at the city council level, for sure. We will be, we'll be stepping along with this. So it'll involve our police department, our fire department, folks from St. Joseph's Hospital, from, from community care in West Virginia, Western and Western College, we're going to try to tie a rope around everybody to try to, try to see what we can do. So keep that in mind and be thinking about that. If you have ideas along the way, please let me know, and we'll look forward to having that greater discussion next time. I do want to note that I really, I really do hope that our community finds a way to get behind collectively, get behind the comprehensive recreation complex on Route 33. I know it seems like a pipe dream, it's a lot of money, we do have opportunities to realize funding, we're still hopeful about, about a big windfall opportunity that has to do with the abandoned mine lands monies that were first earmarked for broadband, but as, as the tower projects have kind of gone by the wayside, because fiber has, has become the way of the future for, or the way of the currents and the way of the future for connecting folks with broadband, there's money in that, in that account, that it has been, has been blessed by the state, it is in Washington DC, waiting through it's the red tape up there, but there's opportunity there to bring some of that money back home here to help eat off a big chunk of the cost of that project. This will be a game changer for Upstate County if we're able to do this. So I hope all of us as a community together, our citizens, sports leagues, corporations can, can get behind this to see that become a reality, because man, what a, what a difference that's made for Bridgeport at the bridge, what a difference it's made for Barbersville, what a difference it's made for Wheeling, you know, where those, where those recreation complexes have popped up, economies have, have spiked right along with them. So we're right here in the center, we're easily accessible north and south and east and west, I hope, I hope we can find a way to all get behind that as a community. So more to come on that project. With that, I've pontificated enough, it's 8:49, let's call the meeting. Is there a motion to adjourn? All right. Have a good weekend.